All right, members of council, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, members of council and citizens of Williamsburg County. We got a sound check on all of our medians. Also, citizens are also encouraged to call into our teleconference line, which is 877-309-2073. The access code is 590-380-589. We are open to the public, so we are taking a maximum of 10 people in our chambers at this time. We do have people that are located in our chambers. Again, last sound check. Very good, thank you. We're going to go ahead and officially open up the public hearing to hear or to discuss items ordinance number 2021-4, 2021-5, 2021-6, 2021-7, and 2021-8 are here to discuss this. However, at this moment, I would like for our Economic Development Executive Director Gillian Fryson to kind of brief the citizens on the various projects. Please be advised that some information can be discussed, and some of them are within our confidentiality agreement. So, once he is done explaining these various projects, then anyone who may have any comments will have the opportunity to voice their concerns in one to three minutes. Mr. Fryson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, members of council, Williamsburg County citizens. Good evening.
Evening.
Project Hemingway, which we will discuss in ordinance number 2021-05, is a new solar investment in Hemingway, South Carolina. It is a $71 million capital investment with no jobs. Again, it's a solar project. The fee-in-lu of taxes agreement is for a 40-year term, and the approximate property tax revenue from this project is $7.4 million over that period of time. So, the fee-in-lu payments for each year will average approximately $217,500 each year to the county. Those payments are based, however, on a 75-megawatt power generation by the solar company. The payments will adjust. If they make more, they will pay more. If they make less, they will pay a little less, but that payment is on the average of 75 megawatts. That project is also incorporated into a multi-county industrial park with Florence County, where Florence County will receive 1% of the fee-in-lu tax revenue. Williamsburg County will receive 99%. Any questions regarding Project Hemingway? That is correct. That is correct. No, I'm sorry. It's on 4151, towards Andrews, headed towards Andrews. Yes, sir. Okay. Project Forston is a new manufacturing facility. The company will be rehabilitating an old, abandoned manufacturing facility on 133 Old Forston Road in Greeleyville, South Carolina. This is a $3.8 million investment with 35 new jobs headed to Greeleyville. The county has entered into a special source revenue credit agreement with the company that will equal 25% of the rehab cost to the facility, which will be $600,000 to rehab the facility. This property and this project will also be placed in a multi-county industrial park with Florence County, Florence receiving 1%, and Williamsburg County receiving 99%. Any questions regarding Project Forston?
Yes, exactly. If you could tell us, what will they be manufacturing?
This is a sheet metal fabrication company.
Okay.
And when will they be open for business as far as being able to accommodate those 35 new jobs?
They are projecting to begin operations this summer.
Okay, and to apply, would they need to go online or go there in person?
We have Ready SC, which is an agency that's run through the South Carolina Technical School System. They will be doing the recruiting and the advertising for these jobs.
Okay.
Yes. And I imagine SC Works will be participating in the advertising for those jobs too as well.
All right.
Any more questions? Dr. Wright, you just wanted me to talk about those two items, or?
I believe that that's making sure we covered everything so that they... Yes, I think that's it. Does members of council have any questions regarding these projects that have been kept, kept under wraps for a while? None?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fryson. All right, we are allowing any citizen to come forward, and they can speak for one to three minutes regarding any of the ordinances that we have on our agenda for today. Nothing? There is about a 30-second delay. Anything? Comments? None? Okay. Very good. There are no questions. Going once, going twice, third time. This public hearing is now closed. We are going to call, call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting for today, April 5, 2021. Invocation, Mr. Wilson.
Dear Father, we thank you for the opportunity to fall before you again. We ask you, dear Lord, to look in on this council, look in on this community, look in on this county. And then, dear Lord, we ask you to bless us with the blessings we so stand in need of. Then, dear Lord, we ask you to give us the strength, power, and understanding to take care of the business of this county. These blessings and all, we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. We need a motion for approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting that was held March 16, 2021.
Some move, Madam Supervisor.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, or all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. Our next order of business is ordinances, third reading for ordinance, for our third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2021-04. This one I have to read out because a number will have to be inserted in it that was already verified. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2015-007 imposing a service fee to be known as the water availability fee to be collected from all non-users of the Williamsburg County Water and Sewer Authority system, which is available to both occupied businesses and residential property owners in Williamsburg County, to provide that a fee will be charged with each affected property owner by adding the sum of, to the existing fee of $180 totaling to the annual property tax notice commencing tax year 2021, and further provided that the hereafter, any amendments to the water availability fee shall be made by resolution of Williamsburg County Council. Members of council, I would need a motion to insert information, the numbers in here. Any second.
All right. Madam Supervisor, for clarification, okay, this is third reading for adoption. Where those blanks are, that's, we currently pay $180 if they have access to the water.
Yes.
But we are adding $100 to that, making that a total of $280.
Correct.
Okay. Motion for third reading.
So, will we charge each affected property owner by adding the sum of $100 to the existing fee of $180 totaling $280? Need a motion for that.
Some move.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. The motion is carried. Third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2021-05, that's the execution of the fee-in-lu agreement for Project Hemingway. We need a motion.
Some move, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2021-05, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. Motion is carried. We also have third reading of ordinance, or third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2021-06, it's authorizing the joint-owned operating industrial park with Florence County, thereto with Project Hemingway. What is the pleasure of council?
Some move, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of third reading and adoption of ordinance 2021-06, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. Motion is carried. Next order of business is third reading and adoption of ordinance 2021-07, authorizing the execution delivery of infrastructure credit agreement by and between Williamsburg County and Project Forston. We need a motion for, for third and adoption.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to, for third reading and adoption, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. Motion is carried. Our next order is third reading and adoption of ordinance 2021-08. This, or this is ordinance authorizing development of the jointly owned and operated industrial park, and this is for Project Forston. We need a motion for third and adoption of that ordinance.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. The motion for third and adoption of ordinance number 2021 is carried. We have nothing for second reading and nothing for first reading. Do have a resolution, 2021-06, a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with Vital Aging of Williamsburg County for the building in improvement. They're on no, known as the Old Kelly Hospital property located at 110 West Mill Street, King Street, and designated as tax number 11025-132 in accordance with the grant from the demolition of the existing building. Mr. Jinkison, will you please come up? Attorney Jinkison.
This is a lease agreement that you've all seen. It was originally, well, it's for seven years, and the county will have the property located at the corner of Academy and Mill Street, Old Kelly Memorial Hospital, presently owned by the Vital Aging, and that property will be conveyed by deed to Williamsburg County. In return, we will lease it back to them for a dollar a year. During that first phase of the lease, the property will have to be reduced by demolition. The total cost and expense borne by Williamsburg County and covered by a CDBG grant of the amount it's going to cost us to tear it down. Once that's done, it will be a bare piece of dirt. Now, the Vital Aging is seeking funding for a new facility. The lease said that at the end of the lease term, or upon completion of the project, we will then turn around and deed it back to Vital Aging for a dollar. Well, about a week ago, Mr. O'Brien said he had to send the lease up to the funding authority in Columbia, the CDBG people, and they changed 3.2, and that paragraph has been changed, and it's very peculiar. It said that Williamsburg County will hold title to the property until the project is completed. I called up Mr. O'Brien, and I said, "Did you tell him? Suppose the project is never completed, it doesn't say we, what to do with the property?" He said, "I sure did." And I told him, "Why'd they change it? Because it's sort of an open-ended lease with no obligation to return the property." He said, "That's the way they would do it, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't talk to me about it." And he said, "That's just the way it's got to be." I said, "Well, you just understand that Williamsburg County will be under no obligation to ever return that property, that nice piece of clean dirt in downtown King Street, to Vital Aging under any circumstance based on this lease, that they are ones telling us what to do." I thought it was very peculiar. He did too. They don't like it. We don't like it. But the problem is, that's just what this government said. Now, what's the lawyer in me tell me can be done? If they don't build a project there, there's nothing going to stop us from deeding it back to them. The agreement is between us and Vital Aging. We will have completed all of the work under it, and I'd say we just deed it back to them, and that's it, regardless of what they said in the agreement once it's over. There's nothing to stop us from doing that, unless, I just, you know, it's just a peculiar situation, and it's my job to let you know about that. But do I believe it's something that ought to stop the deal? No. But I just wanted you to make you aware of it. At some point in time, if it comes back up, don't let these words haunt you. I think we'll be okay. Questions?
I also take note, members of council, that in Section 17, trash removal, LISA shall at time be responsible for the removal of trash and rubbish from the demised premises following completion of the demolition phase and the site reclamation. So, we will be responsible for also cleaning it up once the demo job is done.
And those other incidentals that was in that lease, as far as maintenance and the utilities, I think we were supposed to take those out. Has those been deleted?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The freezer facility is the only thing that's going to have utilities to it, and that's their freezer. They have the sole right to use that and go there, and we won't have any utilities, any liability there. I don't, I don't see us having any liability other than it becomes not maintained or whatever by them, and they supposed to. You know, the town may come back and say, "Well, you got to go clean up the lot." They quit doing it, and that, you know, that's...
Yeah, yeah, I was just referring to some of the things they had in that original lease that we, I, we didn't go along with, and I was checking to make sure it's been deleted out of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
With the removal of the debris, is that something that the town could partner with us on, to share some of that expense?
They really don't have the equipment to do that.
And that's going to be from the demolition, or are you just talking about afterwards?
Well, the demolition or cleaning down to the bare dirt. But after that, it's, they're going to be the less easy, and it's their responsibility to keep it clean and maintain it until it's, something's built back on it. And I don't, you know, certainly, if down the road, from some reason, it's not funded, we could always just deed it back to them, even though the agreement doesn't say that. It's a lease agreement. If the county wants to deed it, we can deed it.
Supervisor, you mind reading that again, what it states with the debris?
It's the Section 17, trash removal. LISA, which is us, shall at all times be responsible for the removal of trash and rubbish from the demised premises following completion of the demolition phase and the site reclamation, reclamation.
Okay, so it is saying afterwards, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But it says demolition, so that leaves me to believe while they're demolishing it, the county is responsible for removing that debris at all times. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's what I understand it to be.
After the demolition.
Like, once it's, I guess, been cleaned off, then at that point, you know, obviously, we won't have any more responsibility in terms of demolition. But my understanding is that maybe, I don't know if this was talked, I just noticed it just, you know, just before I came down here, that it basically means that we're going to be responsible, after the building is demolished, we're going to be responsible for removal of that debris and trash from that site.
So, are we equipped to do that? Because I know right now Public Works is pretty taxed. So, would that be in the case, and we're trying to upkeep the county, are we equipped to be able to handle that?
No, not without it being a substantial strain on my team. But that's just something to think about.
With, with the demolition, I mean, is that not a part of the demolition, the cleanup part of it? I would think so.
I would hope so.
That should be a part of it, correct?
I would hope so.
Right.
So, is there any way we can be sure of that?
Once the demolition is over, that includes cleanup.
I don't think we should be responsible for that.
Demolition is including cleanup.
Right.
Is that true?
And the demolition contract should specify that.
Right. The contractors are going to make sure they clear the lot completely, and, and that portion, we're talking about any debris, we're talking about after the demolition and cleanup, not while the demolition is going on.
Years after, a month following. I'd have, I'm going to look at the lease itself. It says the less R, which we are the, the county is the less R, is responsible, it's under paragraph 17, is at all times responsible for the removal of trash and rubbish from the premises after completion of the demolition. So, that could be weeks, months, or years.
At all times.
Yes.
I really think we need to get that cleared up.
Yeah, we need clarification on that.
Because I just don't see how they can demolish the building, and then we be responsible for cleaning it up. You know, if you're the contractor, you're supposed to demolish it, clean it up. And clean it up, right.
If clarification is needed, the clarification would be the county not responsible. But it's very clear that it is our responsibility as drafted in the lease.
So, pleasure of council.
How do we know that the town cannot assist? Have we talked to them about this already?
I just know in, in previous projects, they've had, you know, they've utilized our equipment for assistance. So, they don't have a big old, big arsenal of equipment. To be honest, we don't either, but, you know, we get through.
They don't have anything.
So, you all want to just...
Let's get that clarified.
Postpone it until, postpone this resolution until the next meeting, so we can get clarity?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I definitely think we need clarity. I, I just don't see how we can ask us to take care of that. You know, we need to be sure of that before we decide on it.
Resolution 2021-06 is being postponed until the next meeting in April. Next order of business is Resolution 2021-07, Fair Housing Resolution Recognizing the 53rd Anniversary of the U.S. Fair Housing Law. It is done in resolution type. I'm not going to read it all, but they are asking us, Williamsburg County, to sign a resolution in regards to fair housing. It's pleasure of council.
Motion to approve and, and adopt that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the Fair Housing Resolution 2021-07, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. The motion is carried. I guess there's a such thing as being too clean. As you all know, we, we're pretty much postponing the boards and commissions until May, so this won't appear back on our agenda until May. Under our new business, we have in our, in our, in our room, Ms. Frida Cox, who's our PD Coalition Coordinator for Williamsburg County. You may come up, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Again, it's April, and April is recognized nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I just want to bring you a few statistics. And then, Helen, are you going to come up and say a little something? She's our chapter board, one of our chapter board members. Child abuse is, is reported every 10 seconds in this country, and referrals to state agencies, protected agencies, involve about 6.6 million children, and around 1.2 million of those children are subject to an investigative report. Here in Williamsburg County, we had 123 CPS investigations. 94.3% of these investigations initiated, was initiated in 24 hours. So, the, our county has gotten really well, really good at, as soon as they get a report going out and investigating. I got these facts from Tara Bradshaw, the executive director of our local DSS. 29% of the investigations were founded for abuse or neglect in this county. Child abuse, because of COVID, has been, the numbers have increased because children are at home all day long. A lot of them are without supervision, and a lot of different people may have access to those children. So, with COVID going on, it's amplified the risk for these kids, and they don't have people that's looking out for them, like teachers. Usually, when teachers are there and kids are in school, they, they, they're the ones that notice the marks. They're the ones that notice that the kids didn't have anything to eat. Sexual assault is, this month is also recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and every 73 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in this country. That's a big number. In nine, in every nine minutes, that victim is a child. Eight out of 10 rapes are by someone the victim knows, and around 20% of American men have been victim of sexual violence also. And when you talk about vulnerable populations, like people with disabilities, they are more at risk because of the fact that they sometimes can't verbalize, they can't walk, they just have to, a lot of them suffer. We just want you all to know that PD Coalition is here. We are your neighbor now. We're here in the square. If you know someone that is needing any kind of assistance, please don't fail to call us. We have ongoing projects that we're, we're doing throughout the county. One of them is Denim Day. It is a way that we recognize Sexual Assault Awareness Month, where we're asking everybody in offices and organizations to wear jeans on that day. I have flyers and information out in the lobby. Please stop by and get some of them. And again, I thank you for everything that you have all done for the Coalition. We did a project in getting our new center open. We couldn't have done it without you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. So, what day is your denim day?
It's April 16, February 5th.
Okay. Okay.
We'd like people to take pictures so that we can submit it to our fifth.
April 16th, whatever that Friday is.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right, Members of Council, we have a few things we need to discuss. Oh.
If I can speak briefly on basically the same or similar topic. As Frida indicated, I'm a board member, and I have been asked by our board to come briefly and ask for a certain level of funding. I know that the Finance Committee has already met, and it is my understanding that the Finance Committee has set aside $650 for us. In the past, the county has contributed $2,000 to our operating budget for operations. So Frida gave you a partial list of what is done in this county by the Coalition. We provide services to victims of abuse, adults and children. We provide training for individuals in schools and churches to avoid abuse, and we provide housing and training for the victims of abuse. She mentioned briefly what the Coalition has invested in Williamsburg County. After almost 10 years of providing those services from Lake City, because we didn't have a spot in Williamsburg County, and Frida was working at a Lake City for that 10 or so years, we have a home of our own in King Street, Number 2 Courthouse Square. We, along with the contributions from a generous person in Greenville, and our legislative delegation, and contributions from County Council, and others in Williamsburg County, Mr. Jenkinson and I both contributed, there was $230,000 invested in that project, bringing that building back to life in the Courthouse Square. How many people do we serve here? Well, in the last full year of service, some of it impacted by the COVID-19. The agency served better than 2,000 residents in Williamsburg County. And of those 2,000, there were approximately 100 of them that received long-term services. The other 1,900 or so were in short-term educational programs. You've been listening to employment figures from Mr. Freyson. The agency, the PD Coalition, has three full-time employees in this county who provide services to the residents in this county. But it has 50 employees spread all over the region who also work together to provide services here. The Durant Center is a medical center that provides the services of physicians and counselors from Florence, primarily to people involved with DSS. There is a shelter in Marlborough County, which serves this county as well, and that provides homes to people who have no safe place to go to, families in need. And we operate a hotline 24/7 to give advice and counseling. There's also an Alternative to Violence program that teaches people how to avoid violence, primarily it serves males, but it will serve anyone. And we provide the school and church programs. And what may, what are the plans in Williamsburg County? Right now, the agency is considering placing a satellite of the Durant Center here in Williamsburg County on East Main Street. That project is under active consideration now. If so, some of those physicians and counselors would be working out of King Street part-time. The objective would be to serve the, I believe the last figure I heard from Gloria was 12 people who, in the last six months or so, had to go back and forth to Florence for services. They could get those services here, and we could help serve a portion of Clarendon County and lower Florence County from Williamsburg County. So if I might, I have these to leave with you. This is the summary of what I just said, and I would hope that when you consider your budget again, you would consider funding us at the same level, because we are spending other people's money here to keep folks employed and to provide a multitude of services to the people here. So if I can leave these with you.
Ms. McFadden, is that hotline number as well in that material you're giving us?
Yes, sir, it's on the yellow sheet.
Okay, okay.
And I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? You almost took out attorney by using that spray. Wasn't your spray? Okay. All right, unfortunately, we had some technical difficulties, so I wasn't able to spring this on you all. But as, I spring this on you tonight, however, we will figure this out for the next meeting. But one of the great things I would like to finally be given the opportunity to reveal after having to keep this to myself and the rest of the steering committee's self, is that Williamsburg County is getting a state park in our county. And there are also going to be some revitalization done down towards the King Street area, the towns area as well. But we are getting a state park, and that park is going to be located along our scenic Black River. For so many years, as you all know, we have not been able to take full advantage of the Black River. And here's our opportunity to allow for more access to the river and allow people to take advantage of its beauty. And I'm excited to be a part of the steering committee. I was approached back in 2019 with a young woman who talked about this, and I said, okay, sure, all right, great, wonderful, let's get started. And she says there's still, still much more we have to do. Also, King Street actually started their part of their ideal as well in 2019. Also, to a great person, Mr. Lewis Drucker, who was also on my case about getting more river access. So now, I'm happy to say that those dreams are now coming to fruition for us. We, it's been, it's going to, it's a partnership with many state and local and private organizations throughout the county, throughout this county, as well as Andrews, as well as parts of Georgia, obviously other parts of Georgetown counties. I'd say the location of the state park will be in the Saltres Community. This track is called the Heinz Canada Track. It's just over, just down 521 and 377, just as you go over the bridge, there's a little turn in there, and that's where this beautiful scenic area is. If you all have been watching our Facebook posts, we are, we do have the video and the exact track, along with a wonderful story of how this is going to come to fruition. This is definitely going to create a place for everyone, no matter who you are, what your likes or dislikes are, for everyone to come together and be a part of this, this wonderful opportunity. The only way that our citizens in Williamsburg County can have their voices heard as to what they want the state park to look like and what some things that they want inside of the park is that you must submit the survey. The survey is going to be very important as to how we lay out how this park is going to look. Now, everybody's not water crazy, and everybody's not land crazy, so we want to be able to have a joint representation of what we want this park to look like. It's a blank slate, Williamsburg County citizens and our folks that are here, and this is our opportunity to, to create something from us, something that we all can be proud of. We will have copies of the survey in this facility. The webpage is up, please go on there, you can fill it out. You can also read the history of it and actually look and meet some of the great people that were, that were really inspired to look at this, at this wonderful thing in our county. And believe it or not, the ones that was most inspired did not even live in Williamsburg County. So myself and Director Turquoise Rouse is on the steering committee, and we are working hard to ensure that we get the word out and we really get people on board to this survey. Again, it's, that survey will be on our webpages as well as it'll be here. They are, we are having a community meeting here, May 11th, 2021, May 11th. Wait a minute, not May 11th. I hope that's right, May 11th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Let me make sure I got that right. Yes, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Bring your ideas. I also would like to send a special shout out to Ms. Maria Whitehead of the Open Space Institute for pushing this initiative, because if it wasn't for her, we probably wouldn't have gotten recognized. So she is a definite, strong, amazing woman who has the heart of gold for Williamsburg County. So with that being said, I want you all to go and watch the video. It is, it is really, really tear-jerking to see this, so just go on there and look at it. Next order that I will be discussing is our drive-through events. I mentioned this last council meeting. We are attempting to try to get some things open back in the county. Unfortunately, with the numbers fluctuating, it's taken us a little bit longer to do that. But our next phase is to somewhat do some more outdoor events, but for now, we're looking to do drive-through events, and I am asking council to allow for, until we can get everything fully open, to allow for a fee of $40 that will allow the groups to utilize the restrooms in the event that a drive-through event is, has been requested. Pleasure of counsel. Yes.
Oh, Madam Supervisor.
$40, $40 for each event. So if someone wants to utilize Trail Community Center, and they want to go in and utilize the kitchen or the area to prep food for a drive-through, it's $40, because we have to assign a person to that facility. We can't just open it, you know, obviously you all know that, we can't just open it up and allow people to have access to it.
So we're going to do a flat $40 for all facilities?
It doesn't matter how long they occupy the space?
It will be occupied for three hours, that is a three-hour charge.
Motion on the floor, second.
Any discussion?
There are a couple buildings that we probably need to look at. I don't know if we finalized those things, whether we now control those buildings or not.
So all of these will be handled by building and grounds personnel only. It will not be any of our, any of our team members that are probably sitting waiting and can't wait to get these facilities open, though these will be occupied by building grounds employees, Williamsburg County employees only. Any other discussion? Yeah, some.
Just, just in reference to Mr. Miller, just thinking ahead, will something be sent out to those other persons who may think that they can operate it for that $40? Will they have something writing themselves? Yeah, we're going to need to send something in writing.
Okay, that, I can do that. But yes, those facilities are only to be open and to be managed by Williamsburg County staff, paid staff. So we have a motion discussion. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor for us imposing a temporary $40 fee on drive-through events only, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. Motion is carried. We are definitely working on a plan for reopening. Like I say, our next phase is just for outside events, baseball games, those type things. People want to have little events outside. We just, it's just kind of rough, us trying to get together. Our workloads are very heavy. So we are hopefully moving into that phase sometime in May, hopefully. We are still looking for a qualified Chief of Finance Officer, candidates again must be a CPA that has the ability to become or to receive a GFO certification by the State of South Carolina within one year. We are not having good luck at trying to locate this person. We are on roughly 12 different job sites, Indeed, Monster.com, various websites. We've even went internally, we got our auditor looking for persons for the position or potential candidates for the position. Yes, and other counties. So I'm hoping that we have something soon. As you know, that date for Ms. Nelson's retirement is coming up, coming soon.
Supervisor, I'm sorry, is there a mandate that says there has to be a CPA?
Yes, there ain't no mandate, but we want one. Not a mandate, but so many, the CPA has the ability to prepare certain reports that we're going to need. I think that for a long time, that's what council member have, council members have been wanting, someone that's a certified public accounting, accountant, so that's the direction we probably need to move on. Right, we don't have to prepare so many different, or the auditors don't have to prepare so many statements. And not to say that it can't be done, it's just a little bit easier for someone that has that background to be able to do that and produce that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you compare the salaries of any CPAs with surrounding counties to see if we're offering enough money?
We hadn't put a wage on there, we hadn't put a dollar amount on there, but usually a CPA can make just as much as the county supervisor or county administrator.
Well, I understand that.
But yeah, no, we had not put a, put a dollar amount on it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
In the event that we don't have one before Mrs. Liz's retirement, what is our contingency plan?
Contingency plan is that she will stay on until we find someone. Any other questions? Okay, vaccines, they have opened the requirement up to all those that are 16 years and up, 16 years old and up. We have not scheduled another first vaccine in the county. As far as working with Williamsburg Regional Hospital or NUSC at this point, I do understand DEHEC did a vaccination operation today at the J.J. Mitchum Facility, so I'm asking our citizens to please stay tuned. Seems like this group is a little bit slower to respond, so that just tells me, anyone that was 55 and younger, they're, they're not that interested in getting the vaccine. However, we are strongly encouraging people to get the vaccine when the opportunity presents itself to you. I'd like to also take this time to thank our county offices for helping out, volunteering. They have been working very diligently. We do have two second-dose events that's coming up this weekend, Thursday and Friday, so those are second dose only. So we will not be, not have the ability to, to, you know, in some cases, vaccinate for first vaccines. So I'm asking that, you know, people, please just monitor the social websites and the county website and see when it's going to become available. Dr. Gamble, Alan Abernathy, and Quentin Tompkins have been very instrumental in us getting vaccines to our county, so I'd like to thank all of them again for all of their help. On April 8th, 2021, the Williamsburg County Recreation Facility, remembering those we lost during the COVID-19 virus. This is an opportunity for, we've asked that family members call in if you want to have your loved one recognized. We will have a very short program that is designed around celebrating the lives of those we lost. We are asking all council members to attend. They will each wear a purple ribbon, and we are asking family members that will be attending to have one, to wear white. So this will be a, a, a good time for us to just take a moment and just recognize the loved ones we've lost. Let's Talk, hashtag Let's Talk Talk. It has been very successful. We have expanded our Let's Talk, our Let's Talk meetings, community meetings, to now we're actually bringing in people from other departments. We've had many council members that attended, and allowing people to ask questions from various departments, which I think is great, it shouldn't all come from me. So we've had our different speakers that have been on there and been able to help and answer questions. We've had people mixed districts, so it doesn't, doesn't matter if you're from the district that we're, we're in for that day, just come on board and join us. It's a lot of good information being put out, so I'm excited about it.
Madam Supervisor, what was that date again?
Say again?
What was that date again for the vigil?
It is April 8th, 2021. It is April eighth, twenty twenty-one. It may be in your packets. It is in your packets. It's a purple, it's in purple. So it's at six P.M. at the County Recreation Facility.
Madam Supervisor, question. Is our numbers of COVID cases in the county, is it decreasing, or if so, how drastically and is it sufficient?
It has decreased, but I think a lot of that is because we're not testing as much either. So we were testing a great deal. We've switched operations from testing to now vaccinating, so I'm not for certain that the numbers are necessarily accurate in our reporting. I just know that as far as reported numbers, we have decreased. Emergency community meeting scheduled for District Three. It is not a live meeting, this is via Zoom. We do have the information posted. That meeting is scheduled to discuss some of the concerns of the community. Again, that meeting is scheduled for April seventh at six P.M. via Zoom and teleconference. Please see the county website and invite information on that for this particular emergency community meeting for District Three. Hemingway Office Hours. I will be setting up office hours for the Hemingway Office for April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, from two P.M. to six P.M. Please call eight four three three five five nine three two one, extension fifty-one oh one. This will be by appointment only, by appointment only, obviously, because we don't want a whole lot of people in one facility. So again, I will be having a Hemingway Office Hour, or Office Hours located in the Hemingway Office, and that's at the Chavis One Stop Building. American Rescue Plan. At this time, we have not gotten, still hadn't gotten much clarity on what we can spend the funding on, so we are pretty much waiting. However, that sixty-day timer started day that the bill was signed, so we are still waiting on some guidance as to what the funding can be, can be used for. So just stay tuned. Again, as I stated, soon as I find out, everybody will know about it, just so that we can make sure that everyone's informed of what's, what's actually happening in reference to that funding source. FEMA this week, thank God, I actually finished all the FEMA supplemental paperwork. We are now waiting on word to find out what will be approved and what will not be approved. So we submitted an application of a little over four hundred thousand dollars, so we will see what they will approve from that. Recycling Center Hours. As you all know, last week, I, I took, may, nor, don't know, I took a, took a survey online and asked the citizens what would be the best time ideally for them for having the recycling centers open. So they came up with, most of them selected the two to sevens, and then I had a few that said, you know, don't forget about the seniors. So effective April twelfth, April twelfth, all sites, all of them, all twenty of them will be open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from two P.M. to seven P.M. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays from seven A.M. to twelve noon, or to noon, and on Saturday from ten A.M. to six P.M. The County Landfill will also be open on Saturdays from eight A.M. to one P.M. Also, members of council, we are having a virtual grand opening ribbon cut on Thursday, April twenty-second, for the new Williamsburg County Fire and EMS facility. Invitations of some sort, flyers should have gone out to you for you all to join us. Again, this will be a virtual event. Does any member, does any member of council have any questions regarding all of this information I have provided for you in such a short time? Hearing none. We need a motion for adjournment.
To move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer is the same. We are adjourned. Thank you, members of council and citizens of Williamsburg County.